We begin the meeting. The pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, and to the Constitution of the United States. And to the Constitution of justice and of our citizens.
Everybody knows Francis Scott Key wrote that. Now we're all discussing. But does anyone know what happened to Francis Scott Key's son?
This is your history lesson for the day.
Yes, Francis Scott Key had a son who was involved in illicit relationship with Daniel Sickle's wife, who was a county hall congressman. He found out about it, confronted Mr. Scott Key's son on his block from the White House, and shot him dead. He then used this for the first time in U.S. history. Sickle's claim temporary insanity. And he won the case. He then went on to become a Civil War general. Get it? Get it for it. Of course, he can appoint her divorce. And if you want to see that later, the bomb, go to the Smithsonian Institute. You left it there and you were periodically yourself. Okay. It's an important story.
Don't cheat. No, don't cheat. All right. This nice lovely first day of summer. First order of business is clerk's report.
I move that we accept the clerk's report.
Second. Moved in second, we accept the clerk's report. Any comments? All those in favor. Second item of business is the treasurer's report. That's Pam, she's here.
Good morning. For the warrants, there was one county warrant, one UT warrant, one warrant for the ARPA funds, and two payroll warrants. And other items are the empowerment, retirement, electronic funds transfer payment. There was one of them for the payrolls. And also have the bank reconciliation for May for Franklin Savings, the COVID account.
I move that we accept the warrants. Second.
Moved in second, we accept the warrants. Sign the warrants. Any further discussion on the motion? Sign down, all those in favor. I noticed that we're going to pay binding $7,000 for the grass for the monument. Are we going to get a report or an update for that from that group?
We can do that. We actually can do that on the 5th if you'd like.
Yeah.
July 5th, is that okay?
I'd like to see how they're doing. I see set $7,000 for grass.
Well, it says supplies. Thank you.
All right. Item number three is the Medco contract for the extension with 3% increase. Okay.
This will be the last increase to do with this contract for Medpro. It's our capital. So there's a clause in there for it. So it will expire.
Move up the bid again.
Correct, it'll have to up the bid after this.
This is the three year, you said?
What's that? It's for a one-year extension.
Okay.
Add a 3% increase from what it was.
So we need a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the Medpro contract.
Second. Moved in second that we accept the contract with a 3% increase. Any further discussion? All those in favor, so signify. So vote. And we have the one sheet that looks very. Okay, thank you. And we have item number four is a jail union employee step increase. You want to claim that, Doug or John?
So basically, I'm here on behalf of Sergeant John Holman. Sergeant Holman was the senator of 2021, but he also has a quite good experience in the Army, with the sergeant in the Army. And he was employed at Somerset County Jail for almost two years. He got his certification in 2020. And right now, he is currently on step one supervisor pay, which is 1997. Would like to move him up to step two supervisor pay recognition of his experience and certification that will move up to 2122.
Okay.
Make a motion that we give him his step increase to 2122, huh?
Past experience.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Any further discussion, comments? Sign down, all those in favor of that motion. So vote. Thank you. Item number six, Juneteenth holiday. Must be administration.
We're committing taxes.
June 6th.
You want me to do the Juneteenth next, but next on the list is committing taxes.
Don't commit the county and jail taxes? The county should be committed.
So I did a little write-up for this. You need, well, the county must appropriate the revenues for each budget jail and for the county. So the first I'm recommending is for the jail to approve $227,595 designated revenue that's on this spreadsheet right here. And $75,000 of undesignedated funds to offset jail taxes.
I move that we give $227,592.00 plus $75,000 undesignedated for the jail fund. Second.
Moved in seconded. Approve the use of designated funds to balance the jail budget. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of that motion? I'm not so sure that that's the way to go, but I guess we gotta pay a bill. Also, there's a second part of that, isn't there?
There is, yeah. So the gross budget minus the revenues that you just appropriated will leave $2,43,640.51 to be raised and appropriated through taxation. So you need to make a motion like that.
So we're gonna take $1 million on undesignedated fund balance total? Is that what you're saying?
No.
$607,220.
I'm doing the jail first. I'm doing the jail first. Yeah. So this is for just jail taxes. So there's two designated revenue sources for the jail. One is boarding revenue, and the other is what the state sends us. I'm sure Doug can better describe this for me. But then I'm saying to stay under the cap, you need $75,000 more. So that remains that through taxation, the county needs to raise and appropriate
Yep. Got you, thank you.
Need a motion on the $2 million, is that right?
Yes, please.
We need to raise and appropriate.
Yes.
What is the revenue coming in?
So for the jail alone, we're estimating $40,000 worth of boarding revenue. So like when another jail is overflowing, they'll send their inmates to us, and we generate revenue for that. And then the state is saying they'll send $187,592 to pay for jail services.
So that's like $200,000 from the state and from their revenue?
Right.
That's for that. And then, so how much are we taking? Today, how much are we taking total out of the undesignedated fund?
About $450,000, $465,000.
Where's the most of it going? Where's the most of it going? The jail?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we raise and appropriate $243,640.51 for the use of Franklin County Jail operations.
Second. Moved in second that we appropriate $243,640.51. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Done. Now we need a motion for.
I move that we raise and appropriate $4,355,618 for the use of Franklin County operations. No, wait, no, no, sorry, sorry. Approve the use of $607,000. Sorry, withdraw that one. Now I make a motion that we approve the use of $607,131 of designated revenue and $393,430 of undesignedated revenue funds to offset county taxes. I'll second that.
So that totals over $600,000 then, doesn't it?
No.
No?
No, those are designated revenues.
Undesignated revenue of $393,000, and up at the top we've.
Yes. $393,430.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion? So vote. Now, third motion that we need to raise and appropriate.
I move that we raise and appropriate $4,355,618 for the use of Franklin County operations. Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion? So vote. Okay? And we must have something to sign? Yes. We're gonna sign one of those sheets. We'll get it here sooner or later. So that's an increase. See, almost $1 million, is that true?
Uh, no, it's like $450,000 increase and.
What's that again?
It's almost a half million dollar increase.
Thank you. That's what I wanted. Make sure the public knew.
Amy, the mill rate compared to last year?
It goes down.
It goes down?
It does.
By how much?
A dollar fifty.
That's quite a change. Okay. So we'll move on to the June.
Mrs. Chair?
Yes.
Prior to the budget being passed, you took $150,000 of unrestricted funds in order to increase in 40 hours. Is that amount of money included in this motion? Or was that above and beyond what passed this fall?
So we're in this fiscal year, so that it is above and beyond that. But we're still have an extremely healthy fund balance. Because I expect at least $200,000 to roll over from this fiscal year to next. So.
To be put into undesignedated fund? Okay, so this along with this, I think it was 160 something, wasn't it? So that's included with the 500 and something, so this totals almost $700,000.
No.
Okay. Just to be clear, yes, the one.
This is the end of the sentence.
Amy, did you find out about penalty on bonds?
There's no penalty.
So all we need to do is put together the amount and make a motion?
I think we should, the auditor will be here on July 5th. I'd like to get a feel for where he stands before we make that next step.
Okay. So after we find out where he stands, we're in good shape, put something together, we'll pay off that, all the bonds.
Donovan?
What is the number, or did you set it out?
What is the number? That was written on that sheet.
129.50. Last year was.
129.50, yep.
And then some down the line.
Yeah, last year.
Right direction, any of you? Yeah. All right. Move to the Juneteenth holiday.
So I emailed you all sometime last week. I had been asked by staff if we were gonna honor the federal and state holiday. Reached out to you all independently, and two of you agreed to honor that holiday. So this is kind of a retroactive asking that you approve the Juneteenth state and federal holiday for non-union employees to be added to the holiday list starting June 20th, 2022, moving forward.
I don't think that's an appropriate move, is it? Doesn't it just have to be done in the public like we are right now? I don't think you can do polls on the public. I don't think that's a way we should handle it. I think we should be public with everything that we decide. I'm opposed to the holiday. I explained that to you? I think many, many states are opposed to it. They're not following suit with the government. I think it's just another government holiday. And I know the two other commissioners voted to support it. But I think we should do that sort of a thing in public.
What, is that what we're doing now?
Mm-hmm.
What he said was retroactive. It's a good point, Eric.
So if we need to make a motion going forward, I think that's fitting at this time. And it's not gonna come from me.
I'll make a motion. What, you want to say them last?
Yeah, so this will either take place in the new week, or Friday or Monday.
I'm sorry, what?
Or Friday or Monday.
Yeah.
Or any day of the week.
It's June 19th if it falls on a weekday.
Saturday falls Friday, so Monday, Monday. So is there a day that would cost us more revenue than others?
So it really only applies to our, you know, non-exempt employees, of which right now there are six non-exempt employees. Those are actual dollars it will cost. All the exempt employees, if they come to work this week, we have to pay them their, you know, their 40 hours.
Plus the following?
No. Just the 40 hours.
So if we, with the okaying of it, it's just those six, right?
Yeah.
And what are the six again if you don't mind? You don't have to give any names.
The facilities director, the both deputy deeds and probate, as well as the secretary, the secretar-- no, she's.
So wouldn't probate and the deed still be open with somebody in there?
No.
So they'd be totally closed out, probably.
And with their state and federal holidays, you said the interaction between deeds and probate can't happen with the state, so how efficient is the work?
The bank isn't open, the post office isn't open. I mean, they certainly could do filing, but, you know, it really prohibits their productivity when the post office, the Fed, everything is closed.
Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we approve adding the Juneteenth state and federal holiday to non-union employees' holiday list starting June 20th, 22, moving forward.
Same one. Okay, moved in second that we support the Juneteenth holiday. I have a question. Could we have an amount of what that's gonna cost the county?
I can't do that right now.
Ma'am, thank you. All in favor of the motion, so signify. And opposed? All right. Item number seven, AARP PA update, sue.
Right, so you guys have the list in front of you where we're at. The list is boxed out pretty on the second page. It'll be the ones that we'll revisit on July 7th. So I want to talk to you about, we have an active project right now that was the lock system, communication system at the jail. And if you remember right, they had two headers, and neither one had any locks in it. So they have done, both companies have done a visit to the jail. I only received one quote because it's, what's happening is we're comparing apples to oranges. What we didn't realize is there's old wiring in the jail system. And one of them is proposing just retrofitting the existing wiring, and one of them is proposing all of it. So I want to, here's my recommendation to you. I'd like you to reject the entire bid process for that project. And we'll go back out to RFP. I'll work with Doug and the jail folks to make sure it's as specific as we can be. I own some of it, but I didn't realize that there was a wiring issue in this. And that's sort of come out of this process. So my recommendation to you is you reject both bids.
Which numbers are they?
It is the, yeah, just a second, let me grab that list.
Number 13.
13. Yep, and there's another one you said?
No, because it wasn't adequate, the first bid, we gave them both the same opportunity to come back again. And really, we are comparing apples to oranges.
We need a motion.
It's not all about.
I move that we reject the security for the cell locks, which had been appropriated for $209,600 and approved on 1/4/22. That we reject it and send it back to RFP.
Second. Doug, that's, so you'll come up with a whole new set of special cases going on today?
Yeah.
Will it include the wiring?
It will.
It should definitely, because we have something on our to do all this and then.
Don't want to come back.
You don't have to do it a second time. And you might have two different voltages. You can add a 1/10 and a 24 volt into the system, and it's, that's probably what you have.
Yep.
Any further discussions on that motion? All in favor of that motion, so signify. It's a vote. Okay, done.
So on the 5th, we're gonna revisit some of this? So are we gonna do the, is the Grange one still there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So that's the 5th.
I'm gonna let all these people know that we'll revisit it. That is what you guys have presented here, they've already presented. I'll make sure you guys have summaries of each one of them. And, but I do want to clarify that some of the data.
The only thing I was thinking about that one is if they're gonna get something done, you know, some of the painting stuff, they probably ought to get on with it as soon as possible.
So you got the whole list here. Do you have it?
There was also down on 25. That doesn't say approved yet next to it, I didn't know if that's just a clerical error. And the legal one on the number six.
So number six happened prior to me. It was when the original setup was done for the upper, and it was just new. There was some legal consultation that Libricky had done.
Okay, so it's been paid, right?
And number 25 is, you know, it's all the postings that we're having to do for RFP. It changes regularly. It's my salary, it's all kinds of.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yes. So it is changing, that's why it doesn't say approved yet. But it's a cost of doing business, I guess you would say.
Is that legal one changing as well?
No, we have not. We had to reach themselves and things.
Okay, I just wonder whether. So the ones that have been approved, have we paid out any of these?
We've paid out parts of many of them, we've paid out all of some of them. Okay? But there's a lot of projects going right now, so like for instance, on the warrant, you see there was some server bills. So that was a $70,000 project, and we've done about $37,000 of it. Okay? So it's a work in progress. And some of it, quite frankly, is the inability to get some of the materials that we're needing for some of these things.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. That it for new business, ladies? Okay, so we'll move to old business, which is the Schoolhouse Road Bridge.
Okay, so when the, this is the one that we've been fighting over for a while. So when the guys came and said that we had had an amendment about, about getting an estimate, right? So we looked that up, and the reason we never went forward was that is once it had been seen that it was not ours, we can't even by law do that. Because we would be spending taxpayers' money on a private bridge. So that was the issue at the time. It was not decided whose it was. And so at that point, we committed to looking at an estimate. But once we found out it was not ours, then we could not follow through on that estimate even because it's not ours. So that's where that stand, and it's been my understanding that, once again, it is not ours. So we have to investigate further, right?
Yeah, so the question is, do we want to? That's what, in my write-up, it's clear that Maine Local Roads has reviewed the list from the Town of Madred going back into the 90s. This bridge was never on their list. The town attorney, or county attorney, sorry, was pretty clear that that wasn't like concrete proof that it was not ever adopted by the Town of Madred. So she thinks that for us to be solidly in a good position, one of us should go up to Fulgher Library at the University of Maine and review all of their town reports going back to 1919, when the Town of Madred became incorporated.
I read that letter, and I thought the illness was on the people, not the county.
I agree with you. But she did state, in order for us to definitively know whether or not that was ever a town bridge, it should be looked into. So I'm asking three of you, do we want to go that far?
I think you have to close the books on that, because, you know, who knows what's gonna come down the road? Somebody could buy another piece of land and go back and through the records and find that, oh, yes, here's that little sentence that said this was back in whenever.
It's happened before already.
Exactly. Do you agree, Mike?
I totally agree. You know, every, every bridge that the county was in charge of has a number. The number is given to you by the state of Maine. There was never ever, ever a number from the state of Maine. So even back when Madred was a town, there had to be a number. Because all of these other towns had numbers, they wouldn't be exact. So it's very clear to me, you know, you're responsible for 4/100ths of a mile, which is 211 feet, which weighs a shot of the bridge. I look at other things too, it's like, what's there? Somebody built the camping. Where was the original home state? If that was a bridge, where is the original home state that was ever in? I thought there's no. So I understand about everybody saying, you know, the good old boy. Now like, well, they did this, and they did that. It's the same thing with the Kennebaker Road. Well, they did this, and they did that. It doesn't make it legal. No, it doesn't show precedent, because it never shows that we paid any money to do that source of work. So therefore, you haven't committed yourselves to anything. It's somebody that might have been working for you that did something that was totally illegal. And unbeknownst to the commissioners, you okayed the water. So if you go down this road, if you just decide to go down this road, there's gonna be a lot of stuff popping out that I already know is out there that you're gonna spend a lot of money trying to prove it's. that you're going to spend a lot of money trying to prove that you don't. And it's that very thing, just like you said, where is the bridge? Where does it stop? You know, there's talk over in Perkins Township, you know, where does the intersection stop? At the Four Corners? Which Four Corners? Which Four Corners? Is it the Four Corners a half mile further in? Or is it the Four Corners that turn left and go up there? You know, there is so much loose verage. But if you go down this road and open up the Pandora's box.
When you say we open up a, if we.
If you start trying to investigate and, and hire people and, you know, because then you're going to go back and you're going to have it surveyed. Where is the road? Is it correct? Is that where it was? You're, you're going to spend a lot of county money to prove that it's not yours when it's not yours, by your own admission.
So what I will say is, I think the state has no real full proof answer for what the county's responsibility is. I had thought that through the process of deorganization, that there would be some kind of like double check, make sure that when we're given these names of these roads that are public ways to the county for them to take care of moving forward, that there was something legal that would give us like, yes, this is what we're taking care of. This is it. Um, what I read of the letter or email from our attorney, she doesn't feel that there is. So that's the question. The question is, okay, Maine Local Roads is saying, okay, it's never been on the list. We don't have an MDOT number for the bridge. I, we think that this is not, this is a private bridge. Um, however, our attorney is saying, well, that may be so, but there really is no clear and defined um, process at the state level when a town deorganizes to give you a clear and defined list, so that you know exactly what you're responsible for.
So what we're really going to say is, if you go back into Madrid's records until the 90s, so what year did they?
1999 was the last year they were a town, in July of 2020.
Has ever spent money, appropriated money to fix this bridge, right, or plow it or whatever, right?
No. So there's a clear, um, process there, um, to adopt roads through the state town process. So there would be, to see if the voters, if the Town of Madrid will adopt Schoolhouse Road or Schoolhouse Road Extension, because there's all kinds of not so clear names for this road. Um, and then there would have to be an affirmative vote. So then you're taking on the road and you're taking on the bridge as a town, and that's the town process. That's always been.
So then what happens when they deorganize and it becomes ours?
Then it becomes ours.
So you wouldn't have, when was this bridge built?
I have no idea.
But you'd have, I thought you said you'd only have to look back into the 90s?
No, we'd have to go, so I would say we would have to go back to 1992, which is the first. So from 1919 to 1992, there could be something in there. After that fact, the Maine Local Roads started doing inspections, so presumably it would have got caught.
You study history, you know.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds, I thought she was volunteering to do it for a minute.
Somebody needs to, if, if we want to move forward and know definitively.
No, no.
And I did call Fulgher and I did call, um, Maine Archives to see if they, they scanned many of these town reports. They have not scanned veterans. So somebody physically has to go and look at all of them.
We have to be someone, an older person, because probably some of this is in curse. And you.
Yeah.
It just seems like if, if you're going to go 75% of the way, go the extra 25% and put it to bed forever.
The other thing is, here's the question I have. If the other side does delay for the extra 25%, right? Would we have to cover, we probably have to cover that cost, right? No? No? We don't have to cover the cost from that.
Then it would be our responsibility.
Then we'd have to pay.
The big expense would be fixing the bridge.
Two.
I'm not very good at offering to, but every town meeting has minutes taken of it? And those should be on file forever somewhere?
So the minutes of every town meeting should be in your town report. What is at Fulgher Library is the town reports.
Then how many, not small towns, is what I'm saying to you.
Then the records were burned.
Yeah.
From Madrid.
They were burned.
So there's no records. So the, the town reports, if there are copies of them, and, and there's an award given now each year for the prettiest and the neatest in, uh, town reports. There's a contest. So the state does have those.
State has them at the archives.
So we just, if you want to check them out.
But the reality is, even if it's in the town report that they have an article, if you don't have the minutes, how are you going to know when they add it?
Well, you have the vote.
Yeah, so the way that town reports work is prior year's minutes are going to be in this year's town report. Well, that's, that's the way it's supposed to be. I'm not telling you that they all are, are supposed to be done correctly, but that is, and then on the back of the last three or four pages is the current town report. So you can actually just pick up a town report, flip to the back, and you're voting on this. But somewhere's in, inside there, it's required that the clerk provide the minutes from all the town, town meetings.
I think everybody, small towns in violation of that, because it doesn't.
They don't have anything strong.
So if this was like.
They're not going to.
So if this was like, if you had these warrants for this was done in the past, even though it was not a bridge, right? So we're, we're really kind of saying that that was a violation of the law and they were spending taxpayers' money on a private bridge, right? Um, how does, how does that?
The, the prior interim clerk reviewed all of the documents going back to like 2002. There is nothing in any of your software systems that says that you spent any money on this bridge.
Because they were claiming something about like it was being plowed by the town, right?
It was plowed up to that 220, 211 feet. And then you stopped doing that in 2017 when you.
Yes. We had a field trip and we decided on which roads we were going to discontinue plowing. We were advised at that time not to close them entirely, because it was too lengthy, too costly. To do that, we were told to stop with the maintenance, and that's what we did. That's the dilemma right here. But there's been no proof, just like on the other road with grading. I don't know how much. How much does it cost to grade a road for a mile? Mike, do you have it?
Well, it's 135 now, so probably a mile of road is going to take at least five hours, probably time to go up and back and up and back and then drop it. Whatever, and then, and then you're going to get, when you're talking about Cana Baker, you've got to truck it up there, you've got to truck it back. There's, there's 300 to truck it up, 300 to truck it back.
A thousand dollars for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we, sure we do. We have an inventory of our roads and bridges.
Yes.
Um, and this never showed up on the inventory?
It's usually.
This never showed up on the inventory?
No.
Okay. But of, of that inventory, how many, I mean, are we, do we have the discontinued roads, no longer maintained roads? It's still, it's still a county road. We've discontinued, uh, maintenance or plowing or, is that in the inventory?
Not that I've seen. All, all I ever see is, is, you know, I get in the middle of it, where is it, where was it stopped?
Okay.
That's always the great debate, where was it stopped?
Yeah.
So I have to go by whoever I can get information from, because the county, because the county, and, 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 was never had everything surveyed or anything of that.
And, and, uh, we're getting into Louisiana, but that's an absolute must. We have to do, we'll, we'll have to do. You know, Amy had a great suggestion to hire an intern. There's GPS, we know where it is, because, um, this could keep happening, 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 and people say, well, it's this road, that road. We need a good, you know, a good inventory, a good description. Same thing with bridges.
The bridges are all inventoried, because again, they're all inspected by the state of Maine. You get a report downstairs every year of regulations and things that you have to pass immediately and, and what they're posted for. And that, that's why that bridge has never, ever been in since the county is up.
We should, we should have an inventory of gravel paved bridges by town.
Well, you do, you do, we'll say 22, you know, 1.2 miles on such and such. 1.1 miles on such and such, 0.6 miles. You have all of that.
Okay.
But the great question is.
Bridges are dead.
It's always about, somebody says, well, you're, you're shot, shrapneling it up a little bit.
The previous road agent and the state downstairs met several years ago. And they had maps and they were supposed to send the county the maps. To my knowledge, they never did send those copies.
I had maps.
Those, those maps show exactly what Bob's talking about.
I, I have all those maps.
And we measured them ourselves and, uh, then they went over the report. We were going over it and then the chair decided that we didn't, commissioners didn't need to listen to it, so I preferred to listen to it, because I wanted to know where those roads were. But there is a list of those, so I already have it. We don't need to do that. That's the state.
I, I have a map of, of all of the roads.
Yeah, good.
And then you wrote, I have all of the records and all of the numbers. Which one is on the county's roads that are the state's responsibility? Which one are the counties' responsibility? I have all of these cemeteries on there, and what the names of the cemetery are, where they're located. That's all on this map.
We, how are we going to get that digitized, Jim? To take.
Get all that, the map?
Yeah.
Well, what would we put it? That'd be my question.
Okay.
Arcview GIS layer?
Right, we can do it probably at the deeds, there that they scan.
The state of Maine has a program. The state of Maine has a program that you don't need all of these maps. If they have a program, you can bring out that road and it will tell you exactly where it is, what the location is, and, and how far it goes.
Is that out of being DOD?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that be integrated with the mapping, and you just pay it through?
What?
Was it be integrated with that mapping system?
Or through UGJ?
Could be.
You were trying to sell it to us, what?
You could see it.
Yeah, you could see it.
Whether or not it would say the details, I don't know.
Supposedly, there were a lot of details within the zone. Because it was just the base map and it was going to be used for like, uh, building and forestry deeds and all that.
You can put layers for zoning. You can put all kinds of different layers on it.
I do remember it was all that one day, because they were talking about that, people were using it.
So what's our, like, do you want to have somebody go to the archives and read these? Or do we want to just leave the onus on the people that are trying to get the bridge to be taken over by the county or accepted by the county?
We've done other buildings.
That's how I see it.
Yeah, I'm sitting on the fence doing that, I agree.
I think we ought to wait to see what they do. Put the onus on them, unless somebody wants to volunteer to do it.
Somebody's lawyer.
I don't hear anybody. Mike's not volunteering.
But not, he's not a lawyer. Yes, no. Would you offer, would you offer the other party that if they went to the Fulgher Library and found evidence that you had accepted?
I would not, I would not offer anything, if I'm at this moment.
Offer them what?
I would think we'd consult our lawyer before we made any statements about accepting.
So in fact, would you offer them what?
That absolutely, that was evidence suggested.
Well, I think if they find it, it is enough.
Yeah.
I don't know if you. If they find it, and I guess they've got the evidence, then we'd have to react accordingly. I don't know what else we can do other than go through all that stuff ourselves. Like you were saying, back until what, '90? There, there's no evidence we paid anything for it in any warrants going back 20 years. And there's no evidence that it was, the state, the, the town reports have been burned, um, and there's no evidence that, apparently there's an issue with the state that when they transferred, it's not that clear.
They have a couple of people that will testify that the county did spend at least.
They never reached, so Vicki, I, I went through the whole file on this and Vicki reached out to them and they never was willing to speak with the county. But I had heard since that there might have been some, um, bad blood going on between the prior agent and the county. So I don't know if that was it. But just because you are a contractor and you worked on the bridge, doesn't mean the county paid for it. You're a contractor, so you could have done work on the bridge and the county never paid for that. Somebody else did. Um, but the couple involved in this request is pretty adamant that they didn't pay for it, so.
That they paid for it?
They did not. They said they did not.
There's no evidence we paid for it.
No, there's no evidence we paid for it.
The contractor didn't pay.
So whatever your pleasure, Mr. Johnson, I find.
I think, just, let it go.
Okay. Is that you?
So what do we say when they contact us?
I don't know. You don't tell them that? But this is, this is our position and this is what.
Our position is the bridge is not county owned.
We have no evidence. It's not registered at the state.
If you could prioritize them.
We're back through the main, uh, local roads and.
It would be pretty simple.
I wouldn't give you information about the Fulgher Library. As I said, we've gone back this far. There's, there's no evidence, so.
Is, I mean.
Let them chase it if they want.
They've given kind of a rough date on when that construction supposedly took place, right?
I think so, yeah.
It should be fairly easy. Should, the, you know, shrinks of the area, you got to look for at least that, and you've looked at all of that.
Anything else on their old business? Nothing. I think that completes the day. Nobody has anything. I await a motion to adjourn.
Move it here.
Okay.
Adjourn, all in favor? We are adjourned at 10:50. Happy summer.